Okay, if you all settle down, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. If I can get everybody to settle down, please. I'm gonna do it again, okay. We're gonna call this -- no, I got it here. I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 10:00. Everybody's there, thank you very much. Thank you all for coming. We'll go ahead and start the meeting off with an invocation by Reverend Stockton Williams, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance given by Drew Paxton. Where'd he go? Okay. You can all stand if you wish.
Y'all will join me in prayer, please. Almighty God and Heavenly Father, we thank you for the great blessing of living in Kerrville, which is the heart and capital of the Hill Country, which is the best part of the best state. We give you thanks for Mayor Bonnie and for outgoing council members Mary Ellen and Warren, all of whom love this city and who gave generously of their time and energy to serve it. We ask a blessing to come down on Mayor Bill and on new council members Judy and Delane and continuing council members Vincent and George. Please give them the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that they may faithfully serve their offices for the benefit of all of us Kerrvillagers. Keep us one city under God. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you both very much. We'll move right ahead to this meeting. So we have possibly some statements by our outgoing City Council, Miss Summerlin.
Well, you guys know I couldn't miss a chance to make one last speech. As I have reviewed my 19 months on the council, two feelings stand out, gladness and gratitude. Enjoyed is not quite the right word for how I felt about my service, but this work definitely is where my deep gladness lies. First, I must thank, and the other is gratitude, of course. First, I must thank Stephen Fine, Glenn Andrew, and Jeanne Ellen, and I think only Stephen is here, for selecting me to fill the gap. Bonnie White was out of town the night they voted. It means a great deal to have the confidence of such excellent public servants. Second, of course, is our wonderful city staff. Reaching back to 2016, it was interim city manager Don Davis, as well as Mike Hayes, who brought me up to speed over many, many hours of patient, patient conversation and Both are men of integrity and the highest excellence and ability. Through the months, I also became aware of how blessed our city is to have other outstanding leaders, beginning with EA and Kim, Brenda and Cheryl, Chiefs Knight and Smith, so many department heads, Charlie Tork, and all the other IT people who are the embodiment of patience. All over town, and in many different ways, I've met city employees that make me proud. Some of these people literally protect our lives, not just from crime and fire, but from impure water and other health threats, and all contribute to our overall well-being in many, many unsung ways. It's been a pleasure to feel responsible for them and to them. From the beginning, I thought that I could best contribute by helping to hire our new city manager, because I'd been through a similar process before. And indeed, hiring Mark and working with him this past year has been the single best thing I've been involved in. His skill, his experience, and his heart exceed all expectations. On the council, as those of you who have watched know, for the last year, I've been in the losing minority a lot. That's always frustrating, but it's been good to feel that I could help support positive ideas and moderate some less good ones. I'd like to thank all my colleagues for their sincerity and their hard work. As part of the new council, I commend Vincent especially for his work on the farmer's market and food trucks, and George for his efforts on the city attorney's contract and his support of that good outcome. And of course, Delane, Judy, and Bill have my total confidence. I hope they will all be able to overcome the divisions of the past, to work together, and enjoy the process. Finally, I want to thank the citizens of Kerrville. I remember from my other experience in local politics that it has a way of investing your loyalty and even your affection for the town you serve. This has happened to me again, serving Kerrville. I begin with the volunteers who serve on so many boards and committees, especially the ones I've personally served with on the EIC, the Library Board, and the Recovery Coalition. There are dozens of other people I've come to know and value highly that I would not have known any other way. And especially in working on the recent election, I met many, many more who confirm my faith that this is a community that cares about its future and wants to work together. So I leave with gratitude and optimism and pray that God will bless us everyone.
Well, I don't think there's a rock she left unturned. So I'm not gonna repeat that, but I'll just say ditto. I came on and have been on council for roughly speaking 15 months. The mayor did come interview me, and there were a group of people, there were 11, and I said at the outset, "Not elected and not running." And I wasn't elected, and I haven't been running for anything. So you can do that as well. I thank everybody in this room for all you have contributed, because without everybody here and a lot of other people, we wouldn't have the city that we do have, especially the city manager, especially proud of him and the job he's done. And I go back to when I got here, and it seemed like three months, but it was really three weeks, that I rode around with Stuart and EA and Kim, and they showed me everything the city does. And I thought, mercy, mercy, that's a whole lot. And it really is, and you can appreciate it's everything from, you know, little bitty things that people enjoy and see, and we're starting to see a lot more of it as we get things completed. There's some reused ponds that are nice to look at. We happen to be able to overlook one, and we've enjoyed, for the most part, we've enjoyed the construction process, except when the pile of dirt was so high it blocked our view of houses across the fairway. But we put up with that. And I've enjoyed the council work with all the people on the council, Mary Ellen, and George, and Vincent, and the mayor. And I think that we represented the city fairly in all the components of the city. I would just like to say thank you for allowing me to have the time to serve, and I wish everybody Godspeed.
And I would add one more thing, that Mr. Ferguson also brought the Chip-Toss Championship back to the city. We appreciated that.
I knew that was gonna come up sometime.
So I guess the next step of this meeting is to have the presentations to the outgoing council, so if, I guess, you just meet me down there, we're gonna do that over there.
Both of us or?
Both go at once or what?
One at a time, I guess. So I can have Summerlin first.
Number four. Just number two.
All right. So, because I'm not too good at doing these things, I'm just going to read, as I did the other day, and everybody can take their nap right now. So we have a proclamation, thanking for your service, and it reads as, "Whereas Mary Ellen Summerlin has served as council member place three for the city of Kerrville since October 2016, and she has shown sincere concern for the welfare of the citizens of Kerrville; and whereas Mary Ellen Summerlin continuously demonstrated an interest in growth and development of the city of Kerrville during her term in office; and whereas we, as members of the city council, wish to express our appreciation to Mary Ellen Summerlin for her many contributions during her tenure of office from October 2016 through May 2018; and whereas," another one, "Mary Ellen Summerlin served as a member of the City of Kerrville Economic Improvement Corporation and the Recovery Community Coalition and ex officio on the Library Advisory Board and Main Street Advisory Board. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Kirk County, Texas, on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere gratitude for the invaluable services rendered by Mary Ellen Summerlin and for serving honestly, fairly, and efficiently the best interests of the community at all times. Pass and approve this 15th day of May." There you go. Okay. Come on down, Roddy Dangerfield. All right, now, okay, now, before we go into this, we practiced the line, right? Okay, so, go ahead.
Oh, has everybody seen the duck?
No, no.
No, no. Oh, sat on a duck. Who sat on a duck?
It's a good thing this is baseball, you get three tries.
That's right. All right. For those of you who know what I just had him do, thank you for letting me do that. All right, here we go. Whereas C. Warren Ferguson has served as council member place four for the city of Kerrville since February 2017, and he has shown sincere concern for the welfare of the citizens of Kerrville; and whereas C. Warren Ferguson continuously demonstrated an interest in growth and development of the city of Kerrville during his term in office; and whereas we, as members of the city council, wish to express our appreciation to C. Warren Ferguson for his many contributions during his tenure of office from February 2017 through May 2018; and whereas C. Warren Ferguson served as council liaison on the following boards, the Audit Committee, the Kerrville-Cur联合 airport board, the Recovery Community Coalition, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Kirk County, Texas, on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere gratitude for the invaluable services rendered by C. Warren Ferguson and for serving honestly, fairly, and efficiently the best interests of the community at all times. Pass and approve this 15th day of May 2018." There you go.
And for the benefit of the incoming folks, I would like to tell you that my wife has said, "The best place to see city council is sitting on the couch watching it with a glass of wine."
Which I assume is where you'll be from here on out?
Yes, I'll be there soon.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, now, we move on to the official canvassing of the returns, and I guess what I'm going to do is simply read the resolution as it is, and we'll read the numbers into the record when we do that. So we have a resolution canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the May 5, 2018 city general election. Whereas the city of Kerrville, Texas, held its general election on the 5th day of May 2018 for the purpose of electing mayor council member place three and council member place four, each to serve a two-year term; and whereas it is found and determined that said election was held in accordance with the authorized procedures, that notice of the election was duly given in the form, manner, and time required by law, and that said election was in all respects legally held and conducted in accordance with the applicable laws of the state of Texas; and whereas it is necessary and legally required for the city council to canvass the returns of this election and to declare the official results, now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Kirk County, Texas. Section 1, the statements and findings provided above are adopted. Section 2, the official tally as presented by the election judge Paul Zolin and shown in Exhibit A, which I'll read in a second, is accepted and approved. Section 3, from the returns duly and legally made, there were 4,079 valid legal voters, and that each of the candidates in the election received the following votes. For the place of mayor, candidate Bill Blackburn received 2,514 votes, Bonnie White received 1,552 votes. Council member place three, Gary Cooper received 1,489 votes, Judy Eichner received 2,522 votes. Council member place four, Delane Seigerman received 2,943 votes. The election, okay, the election was duly called, notice thereof given, and held in accordance with the laws of the state of Texas governing the same. With the following named people having received the highest number of votes cast for their respective offices are declared duly elected for the term of two years, subject to their qualifying and taking the required oath. Bill Blackburn, mayor, Judy Eichner, council member place three, Delane Seigerman, council member place four. So, it's been read in, do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes or is accepted 4 to 0. And I guess that makes it official. And so, we move on to the next item, which is presenting the Oath of Office. Oath of Office will be given by Stephen B. Abels, Presiding Judge of the Sixth Administrative Judicial Reach, and we'll go individually.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This seat will be empty until Thursday. Judy, we'll be back on Thursday.
Okay. And so, did you guys flip the name things?
We did.
Okay.
Well, this is the time that we all came over here for this morning, to witness the swearing-in. I'd like to say just a couple of words. Dr. Bill Blackburn and I started our relationship about 15 years ago as members of the Men's Service Club Chamber at the Louisville University. Bill was an upperclassman, and he was a couple of years ahead of me. I looked up to him then, and I look up to him now. I'll say this to you, Bill, and to you, Delane, and I would say this to Judy, and I'll tell her this variety when I see her, that Peter Roosevelt was giving a speech to Congress on one occasion, and he told those members of Congress that he thought the gift of wisdom belonged to those who could scan the future while they're living in the present. That's what we needed, and I think we have three visionaries on the council with Dr. Bill and Delane and Judy, that they will be able to see what the impact will be down the road as they work today. So it's my pleasure, Dr. Bill, to swear you in first.
All right. I have a confession to make. I forgot my Bible.
So I guess that means he has now moved from the spiritual to the secular.
He's in the pickup, but anyway.
Would you raise your right hand? I, Bill Blackburn.
I, Bill Blackburn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties, that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of the office.
Of mayor of the city of Kerrville.
Mayor of the city of Kerrville.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Delane?
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
I think you have to go right up here.
I think so.
Before I swear, before I swear, Delane, we need to make sure the mayor's in his seat.
I want to congratulate you, Delane, on having the best that could ever happen to a candidate to run at a post.
Answer prayers.
Answer prayers, and I think it is a statement about how much people think of you and your potential as council to run at a post.
Well, thank you for those kind words. I took it as a blessing and ran with it, so.
Well, if you'll place your hand on your Bible, to raise your hand. I, Delane Seigerman.
I, Delane Seigerman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Kerrville council member place four.
Of Kerrville council member place four.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Yeah. sign this up and present it to Delane.
There you go. Newly elected.
So, I need a pen.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Do I sign? Oh.
No, you don't have to sign.
Oh, okay. Never mind, that's why I didn't have a pen.
Okay. And then, I sign the certificate of election for me. So. Okay. The, let me explain why Judy Eichner is not here. She and George signed up for a cruise back in the fall. In January, she made the decision to run for city council. Had they backed out, they would have lost everything, and it's kind of a cruise of a lifetime, so, you know, we said, "Hey, go." You know, "It'll be here when you get back." In a moment, I'm gonna ask Delane to make any remarks that she would like to make, and I'll make a few, and these will not be long, but I do want to report the city manager. Yesterday, in a meeting with him, he handed me four pages of 40 projects the city was working on and involved in, and I needed to know about. He had not given me that list before, when I could have backed out, but anyway. I come with a real sense of excitement about where we are as a city. I've told this in many places to many people, but given the city staff that we have, the comprehensive plan that is coming in, the unity of leaders around the city, and the desire of citizens about this being a great city and a great place, and not a place like some other place, but a great Kerrville, and there is just real excitement about that. And so, I feel like we are sitting on go. And one of the requirements to do that is that we, as a council, are a team. And George and I have got lunch this week, Vince and I had lunch last week, and I just feel like there's so much that we can be unified around and be very positive about. Yeah. I want to say a special appreciation to Dina, who is here and helped with the swearing-in, and our daughter Kara, and three of her six children, Zachariah, Jeremiah, and Matthias, and then Carter, sitting on the floor over here, and his wife Karen back here, and their children, Lucille and Elizabeth. And Elizabeth is snoozing away. Just briefly, yesterday I was having lunch with one of our former mayors, and we were at Chinese Place, and this was the fortune that I received yesterday. Your respect for others will be your ticket to success. And in looking at how we conduct ourselves as a council, respect is the first word I'd already put down. Respect for each other on the council, respect for staff, the citizens, the process, and the responsibilities. So I am just, again, excited about what we can do, but I ask for your prayers and support. It isn't easy, but what we can do, I think, can be great, and not only for the generations now, but generations to come. Okay? Delane?
Well, what Chinese restaurant did you go on? I just want to say a special thank you to everyone that's here today, and all of you that aren't here and are here that have helped me get to this point. It was a long road, but it actually was worth every minute, because along the way, I met people I hadn't met, I learned about their challenges in life, I'm hoping I can maybe ease some of their challenges in the spot that I'm in. I don't know if you know it, but I used to play a lot of softball, and in playing softball, you have a team, and not one person wins the game, the team wins the game. So I like to think of myself as a team player. I look forward to working as a team player with all of our council members, and with the help of our very qualified and capable staff, I think we'll keep Kerrville on track. I think we'll know what the track is. And with your help, like Bill said, we need your prayers and your continued support in keeping up with how we're doing, and if we should venture off a tad, please let us know. I know you will, you're not shy, but I don't expect that. I think we've got a great team, and I'm very excited to be serving you, and I thank you for this honor that you've given me and your confidence in me swearing me in this morning. Thank you very much.
At this time, we invite you to enjoy some cake and punch the city staff have prepared, and just some time to visit. Some of us will be leaving for the 11:00 service at the police station headquarters. It's a special service for those officers fallen in the line of duty. That'll be at 11:00. Okay, but enjoy. Okay, but enjoy.